Mr. Serone.
Here.
Mr. Gatewood.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Murillo.
Present.
Mr. Plogar.
Present.
Ms. Simmleton.
Present.
Ms. Venmet.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.1, Public Comment.
We have no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, no public comment. We will move on to 5.1 Superintendent Report. Thank you, Dr. Kelgotti, we will have your Superintendent Report now.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Evening. This evening, I'd like to actually begin by inviting us to pause for a moment of silence. We, as you heard, lost a student, Elijah McDuff?
McDuffie.
McDuffie. And he represented really truly the Oswego journey, starting here in our Broca Learning Center, all the way through, and ending his journey here as a member of our Oswego High School, Oswego East Community. And so I'd like to invite us to just take a minute, and we're thinking of his family. I had a chance to speak with his father today, and extend my condolences, and we want to just send out thoughts of courage and support, and I know a number of things have been put in place to support both his family, but also resources for the community during this time. So I'll ask us to just take a moment of silence. Thank you. During these times, it's an opportunity for us to also reflect on all the important things that are in our lives, and to be grateful, and I know that this student would want that of us, and we will do that for him. And I also want to thank the Crisis Team for their leadership over the weekend, and organizing the Board's very, and speaking with many of the Board members. Everybody's very appreciative for the rallying together, and also for the leadership of the Principal at OE during this time. Well, today marks about thirty days, and I have truly continued to be daily excited, optimistic, hopeful, and also resolved in the priorities that brought me here to this Board. Board, your vision, and the community's vision in coming together and thinking about what Oswego could, what could happen in Oswego, what does our future look like? And it's really been, I guess you could say, illustrated in the names and the people I've been meeting, right? So I've, this past couple of weeks, I've had my meet and greets. For those community members watching, those are available in public notice on our website. There's more information about that. I welcome you all to reach out if there are opportunities that you think that I'd be, have an opportunity to join and to hear. The theme of this year is really community. The message that I'm hearing as I meet people is community. We need more community. We are a community, but we can be a stronger community by learning to listen to our, each other, and to really bridge across our various divides in focus and support of children. To that end, I know that our staff have been working very hard to prepare for back to school. It's been exciting to see the hard work that our administrators who worked this summer. We had our new administration orientation last week. This week, we continue this with all of our admin who are returning and who have returned to the buildings to prepare for the year. I gotta tell you, summer is always like preparing for the launch of a ship. You always know that you gotta get everything ready, just kinda like when a captain gets ready to launch their ship, you don't want to forget a single supply, because you know once you get out to sea, there's no one going, no going back. And so I want to appreciate all our administrators right now, who are working many countless hours to prepare their ships for the arrival of our most important resource, which is our students. Today, both of our high schools kicked off their 101 orientations. Proud day to be a Panther or a Wolf, and want to congratulate our staff and those who gathered together to prepare those today. It's, I think it's three days, right? It's three days of orientation? So welcome freshmen, if you're listening, or new students to your new spaces, congratulations. We believe in you, and we know you can do it. We are excited for your future students. As I mentioned, we have Institute Day also coming fast and quickly in the next couple of weeks. I know educators are out there traveling, resting. I hope you're making time for your last few days of summer and getting those rest in, because I know that soon enough, our schools will be filled with students in our pre-K program, all the way through our transitions program to those who are age twenty-one. So I want to thank all the range. That's one of the awesome things about this district, is we're able to really build that whole bridge across multiple years and lay a foundation. I'm looking forward to our discussion later on this evening around some of the Board priorities that we've surfaced, and really starting to think about how we want to take some next steps there. And with that, I want to turn it over to the President.
Thank you, Dr. Kelgotti. 5.2, Board Member Comments. Any Board Member comments tonight?
You know, I did attend one of the meet and greets, Churchill Club Clubhouse, last week. Just wanted to let the community know that those in attendance really appreciated it. They enjoyed the event and the opportunity to be, to be able to meet you and to hear from you. There's gonna be many other opportunities, as you indicated, and it's gonna be communicated to the public. It's already been communicated, but I think we're getting some more robust communications as well. And please attend. It's a unique opportunity, so to those in the community, please attend.
I'll go. I want to make sure that the community is aware of Start Strong this weekend. Start Strong is a program that's put together by the Kiwanis Club of Oswego, along with the Community Cares Group. What we do is, we want to make sure that every child, every student is ready to go back to school, so we'll be handing out school supplies at Old Trauber this Saturday from, I think it's nine to eleven. I'm going to be there, I know Jared's going to be there, I know Dem, you're gonna be there, there may be other, other people too. Jen, you're gonna be there as well. Come join us, but you know, the important thing is, again, no child should be coming to school ill-prepared based on something we can't, I'm trying to think of how to say it. Every child should be able to come to school prepared for class, and economic status or anything like that should not stand in the way. So that's happening on Saturday. Please, please be there if you're interested, and please spread the word.
I definitely want to put an exclamation on, on that, an exclamation point. You can also drop off supplies if you can't be there to pack backpacks, you can also drop off supplies there. I just wanted to also, probably more as a comment to myself than anything, but to all the parents out there, I know we were, we are all anxious, and utilizing that patience muscle that we all have right now, as our staff and our admin are working behind the scenes around the clock to prepare for a new school year with new systems and new tools that will all make our life easier in the long run, but certainly it feels a little clunky right now. So just a little bit of patience, I see a lot on social media about Power School and that, and transportation, and all the things that we as parents worry about prior to school starting. Just know that that communication is coming very soon, and it will all get to us in a timely manner. And then I think the last thing, just getting a lot of feedback from the community, is that feeling of hope that a lot of people are feeling right now, that Dr. Kelgotti has brought in, and that our staff has really embraced, and I look forward to our students starting off this year in a very, with a very positive momentum. So I'm very grateful for that.
Just real quick, I had the opportunity Friday to give, give back, I guess, participate, I don't, I'm not sure the proper word here, seventy-one reasons, and you know, anything we can do to, excuse me, to come together as a community, help with, help with bringing awareness to, to suicide, and, and in addition to that, problems that, you know, arise for our youth. And it was tremendous outpouring, couldn't believe how many were there. I walked in with, with my wife to go bowling, and she was like, whoa, you, you were right, there was gonna be people here. I said, yeah, but this is even more than I thought. And want to give a shout out to, you know, there were a lot of people I saw there. I saw police officers from, I know Oswego, I believe I saw a couple of fire, firefighters from Oswego, and I was bowling on the same lane with our village president, so to Mr. Kaufman, thank you, I know he was a, one of the donators for sponsors or what have you, and so great outpouring, thanks to Parkside Lanes also, and thanks to the students. It was, it was tremendous to see how many students were there, former and current, and them participating in that, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Jared. One thing I wanted to just add that I, Jen, you reminded me, was that really we want to, the team has been hard at work at really lifting our new website and our student information systems, and actually tomorrow, if you're listening, you will have a chance to receive an email, first about Power School, and then you'll receive an email with your access code and Power School password. And Dr. Kincaid has been working very closely with Dr. Petsky to make sure that this launches. You're gonna get a number of information pieces. If you don't receive anything, so basically, just a reminder, two emails are coming tomorrow. So if you don't get two emails from Power School, please reach out to your principal or any of the other tech support lines that are available.
I just wanted to share with the community that Dr. Kelgotti and our Vice President, Eugene Gatewood, and I had an opportunity to spend some time with our village representatives, Dan DeSanto and Ryan Kaufman. We sat down and we were, we broke bread together, and we just started to talk about our visions for what we want to see happen in terms of our relationship, and we want to build on that relationship. We want to be very collaborative, we want opportunities to sit on the different committees that are available, so that our voice is represented. You know, we are one of the two largest taxing bodies in, in our communities, and we just want to make sure that our community understands that we are working together to provide the best in both of our, our situations, whether it's the district or the village. So that was a very good time and an opportunity for us to really start to talk to each other and open those lines of communications. And then I just wanted to thank my SD308 family, and I, and I do mean family, for their outpouring of support and condolences to me as I experienced an unexpected loss of my brother, and you know, there were so many condolences and cards and flowers and plants, and I just wanted to say, I feel your love and I feel your support, and I thank you for just allowing me this time to grieve as I go through this process. Sometimes everything's okay, and then the next minute, I'm in a pool of tears. So I thank you all for your patience with me. Thank you. Okay, next, 6.1, Discussion of Board Priorities. Dr. Kelgotti will start that discussion.
So, for the purpose of our community and for this Board, I really want to start by situating this conversation this evening around the Board priorities. So the Board has had a tradition for many years of having, hosting a Board Retreat in the summer, and I think that's reflective of a healthy Board attempting to really align itself and prepare itself for the year. And this Board was gracious enough to hold off on its Retreat till my appointment, and so a week before the appointment, or a week and a half before the Board Retreat on July 1, I was, I was advised that not only am I attending, I will be assisting and leading it. So I want to thank our dear Cabinet colleagues who joined me that day, Dr. Kincaid, Dr. Petsky, and Dr. Dalquist, who assisted in really coordinating and helping structure this, and we met with our Vice President and Board President in preparation for what the goals of look. And I think it's important to note that this day was really focused on the priorities, and during this Retreat, we really went deep into what Envision 308 represents, right? It was a chance to learn and to hear each other, but I want to underscore something here for the community, that the work of Envision 308 and where this Board stands is really connected to the equity statements that the Board agreed upon back in September of twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. And the reason why I'm lifting this is because no strategy, no strategy, if it doesn't have a clear vision as to where you're going, is gonna mean much, right? So where are we going? And if you want to know what the Board is interested in, and I think that this Board has made it very clear to me in my interview process, if we want to know where we're going, those statements, those statements, I would say, represent the best of where this Board wants to land. And so as I enter, and as I think about the strategies that are here, it was important for me to understand what the Board's instincts, I guess I was, that's the best way, what are their, what is the spirit, and what is the energy, what is the thinking around the current Envision 308? And where do we want to see? Because clearly, to be honest with you, if you ever tried to do, move a project, you really can't do everything on that project at once. You have to get to some priorities about where you're gonna start, what you're gonna do first, what are you gonna do second, how are you gonna drill down, how are you gonna analyze it, what are you gonna do in getting to that goal? And honestly, that was really the purpose of that day. We spent some time starting to distill. We didn't come to complete answers, but we initiated that process. And so one of the activities we did during the Retreat was we engaged in some reflection, and we, we posted all the strategies on the wall. And Board members had an opportunity to essentially vote together about, in an informal way, it was an informal vote, about what would, what surfaces to the top of the priority list. Not as a exact science, but rather as a way to support me as I came in, to then also analyze where I would put some more focus in my investigation and in learning from what's happening. And from that work, four Board priorities became kind of really the, the top level, we could say, that I am proposing to the Board to consider as we start to think about this year. Not that any other priorities are less important, but rather, where do we start when I think about this exercise, this activity of really learning about the system, but also working through it? And so in that end, you can see here, focus on, there was real consensus amongst the Board members around the priority of improving math and literacy, and really thinking about what are those common expectations for instruction, and what are those systems necessary to really ensure that their early intervention is available for every child to be successful in this district? Next, I would say that thinking about the way in which we're thinking about our post-secondary work around our curriculum, in terms of financial and digital literacy, a high priority in our conversation in addition to our voting, and I would say really in speaking with Board members, is a focus on behavior and social emotional health of all our students, and I would put a caveat onto that, our staff as well. Right? And so not only was that a dotted activity, but that is a voice. I've met with every single Board member multiple times, and in meeting with you, this is always at the top of mind. Climate and culture for students and for staff, because before, behind every student is a staff member. Last, our recruitment and retention approach. How are we thinking about recruitment? How are we being innovative? How are we pursuing high-quality and diverse staff? How are we becoming the magnet for this community, for, to attract educators of color and diverse staff? I'm gonna pause there and just open, if there are any, you know, this is really a conversation for discussion, so how does this resonate as you're seeing these, are there things that are, anything that you think you'd like to add, colleagues who are there? If you think I've missed something, please feel free to hop in.
I'll just make a quick piece.
Yeah.
You know, I, I appreciate the retention of staff and diverse, and you know, I, I had, you know, Jen, you and I kind of exchanged this week, and one of the things, I appreciate what you sent, because one of the things that, it, it had me go back, as you know, and look at evidence-based formula, right? And I don't think sometimes the, the community realizes that if you take the evidence-based formula and look at the percentage of the school, where the school districts are at funding, Oswego is the lowest of every district it touches. It's even lower than, than East Aurora, which is the closest to us, and so I wanted to say, you know, I think that piece is connected, but I don't think it's an impossible task in front of us. We're, we, we all took this job because we care and we want what's best, but.
Clarify, I'm sorry, clarify, when you say lowest, clarify what you mean by that.
You know, the, what's that? Least funded for its needs.
Needs, got it.
Right, and that's the, that's the caveat, right? I thank you for that, because it's, it does, obviously, we get way more resources than Newer, but we could also fit both of their districts probably in one of our schools if we needed to. I'm not saying we need to, I'm just saying we could. But as far as need, we are the lowest. And so I, I wanted to say I appreciated that, because you know, it got me to saying, okay, well, I'm gonna look at this, and, and I, all of us are here because we, we believe we're up to the, up to the task of taking that on, but I, I think there's those opportunities to make sure the community is aware of those things.
I have never sent somebody a hundred and twenty-plus page document and have them whip around data so fast in my life. I was like, whoa, okay, okay. I was like, I just needed him to help me understand some things, and he is so fast. I just want to say one thing, all of these things are spot-on. I think a lot of the things that we, we spoke about were, Envision 308 was created prior to the pandemic. We can't do everything. We have, we have a budget, we have resources that are finite, and we can't do everything. And we need to get better about doing a few things, those few key things, really, really well, and embedding in it the other things that, as, as capacity builds, we can add to it.
Yes.
What I want to share, and something that sparked when Jared and I were going back with the numbers and the reports from ISB and so forth, is that one of the things that the community has talked about with regard to transparency, there's another, there's like a complimentary part to that that comes with it, which is education, of why these things are important, why we do the things we do. And I think that we have, the other thing that we talked about in our Retreat, I know that a lot of the Board members have shared with you, is showing the community why we make the decisions we make. Sometimes they see the end result, they don't see the journey that we get there, and I look forward to that happening.
Yep.
And the second thing is, we talk a lot about how we are still today the fastest-growing county in the country. We grew at a, at a phenomenal rate, but what we didn't do, and, and it happens a lot when you have big organizations, is we didn't scale well. And what we have tasked Dr. Kelgotti and his staff with, his team, is to break down and rebuild systems and processes and procedures so that, that were never built, and so things have been kind of cobbled together, but not formalized and memorialized. So across all of those things, also behind the scenes, he is actually building the plane while the admin is flying it. And so I think it's really important that, this might seem really simple to narrow it down to four things, but there's a whole, there was six hours that went behind this of discussion, and you've gotten that from community members, from staff, as you've met them. So I think one of the most important things, and one of the reasons I know that you were the right person to hire, is because you talked about systems in your interviews a lot, and realize that it's not people that fail, it's systems that fail. And so as we start to build those systems and processes and procedures, we are all, things will become more transparent, things will be communicated better, because the systems are put in the place to make those things happen. So I just wanted to make sure that this is, what we need to do is to simplify, so we can clarify and get, really hone in on, but there's also so much that this team is doing behind the scenes that people don't realize.
Can I be clarified one thing?
I appreciate that.
County, of course we serve as multiple, which county are you referring to?
Kendall, sorry.
That's Kendall.
Yeah, I knew it was.
Sorry.
I was making sure.
Will is up there, though.
Good point, good point.
Yeah, and Dr. Kelgotti, us being the largest employer in Kendall County is not something we just want to have a, have as a moniker.
Yeah.
Because with that comes a lot of responsibility, and so therefore, as a Board, we're tasked with organizational effectiveness. That is one of our key roles, organizational effectiveness and student learning. And so we, we want the moniker, but we also want to have an organization that is effective and efficient, and is taking care of the needs of all those that we impact. And so we understand that the systems give us what there are, how they are structured is the result we get, and if we don't like the result we get, we're getting, then we have to change the systems. And I know that we, we want strong people, because only strong people can build strong systems. And so we're, we're looking forward to the work that we're all going to do together to bring those systems into play, so that we are organizationally effective.
I think you said something there that I really appreciate, is really this idea of, as a system, we have a system, newsflash, we actually have.
We do.
Lots of systems, right? The question now is really intent versus impact.
Yeah.
Right? And so how are we thinking, is the system and the intention we have for the system getting the impact we are seeking? And I gotta tell you, I love starting in a place where we, we care, because it's one thing when I go to these meet and greets, if I were going to the meet and greets and there is one person, or two people, but so far, they've been fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and two-thirds plus of those are both people who are not just, as you said, employers, they're employers of the, employees of the district, but they're also parents, they're taxpayers, they're in our, this is, this is us, there is no one else, this is us, right? Oswego. But this is really our community, and there's such a deep commitment and care that that's a, I got, people are surprised, they're like, wow, you seem really, because it's easier to start with motivation. When people are motivated to come out on a Monday night or on a Wednesday night, when, I mean, was one person had five kids, I said, this is like a vacation for you. But for most people, you know, it's a sacrifice again, for that person too. Right? And so there's motivation. So that's where my enthusiasm, people say, where's your motivation coming from? Why are you so enthusiastic? It's because people care. It's great to start there.
And how do we, how do we make people in this community, because our community is made up of many cities?
Right.
And how do we make everyone feel like they, they're our, they are a part, you know, because even though our name says Oswego, we are much more than just Oswego.
Thank you, you know, thank you for saying that, and I, I've been working with Teresa, our Communications Director, with Board members, and Michelle Early, our Parent and Community Engagement Coordinator, and really just expanding that vision. And so, again, reach out, we've given you access to make sure that, you know, Aurora, or those of you in Montgomery and Plainfield, please reach out, and we are hosting multiple events in these different spaces, and our, and our goal is to really stretch across. And if, if, if what you see doesn't fit, reach out and we'll make sure we find a way to fit you in, right? So as you look, I want to take a step, oh, go ahead, Don.
I just, Jen, Jen said something great, and.
Please.
Getting strong at a few things.
Yes.
You know, those, kind of those, those things that build upon, you know, the, the rest of the, that are building blocks. And then having that snowball effect to where, once you get great at those, you can do lots of other things, and that's. And that's where a district that doesn't have the financial means, the EBF, but yeah, that's, I just really liked that you said that, and I just wanted to kind of say I like that snowball effect.
I'm also hoping, I appreciate the focus on systems, and I do think that these priorities not only reflect the board's discussions at our retreat, but also community discussions that we've had
Yes.
for a long time, whether it be, you know, two, three years ago or on the campaign trail or whatever the case may be. So I appreciate that. And the focus on systems, I think, also allows you to think about what are the things that we're doing that we can stop doing?
Yes.
That aren't working, because we can't just build a system on top of other systems. You really have to think about what's working, what's not working, and build it that way.
So a big part in this next slide speaks to what you just said, Dr. Muriel, is really to also what requires further analysis and inquiry. And I want to say that really, the both slides could actually fall under both categories, right? Because even to understand how to go deeper, you also have to understand where you are, where you are standing, and what do we need to do next, like any endeavor for improvement. And so to that end, we've also identified ways in which we'd want to focus. And so on this slide, you can see these priorities here that emerged as areas that maybe they don't fall in the implementation focus, but they fall in the inquiry and better, more analysis focus, right? Doesn't mean that there isn't going to be continued effort. We have people across the system who are working on these different layers, and that's part of my work, which is to gain better understanding of who's owning what part of the strategy? Who is focusing, who's got, let's, there's SMART goals or what we call key performance indicators, a metric, a metric to know that today I'm starting here, at the end of the day, I'm going to be there. So part of my entry work has been to talk to people and say, which part is your part? Where do you see yourself in this vision? Do you see yourself in this vision? And if not, what becomes a part of our work as we shift? I know that the cabinet members of our, I should say, district leadership team are extremely committed to making sure that wherever we go next has some holistic engagement from everybody in the community.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
I've been thinking a lot about this for the last couple of weeks. And I think it's very, I think, important to say, a lot of people say, can we just focus on the fact that we are, this is education, it's about education, it's about math, it's about literacy? It is, and there's no doubt that we are all here about education. We are also a business. We are the largest employer in Kendall County, this is a business. And so being able to understand that if you and your cabinet can put together the business that functions really well, it automatically allows the educators to do their job. And so we have to focus on both of those things. We do have a dual purpose. We have to run a business with 17,000-plus consumers of education and with 2,500 employees and surrounding other governing bodies that rely on us as well. So again, to talk about what we needed in a leader, but also in, as we move forward with our priorities and our vision, is that we have to run a business effectively.
So my entry, so when we think about the role that I am playing in, in my entry and partnership with the cabinet and with principals and staff and our union leadership is to really start to think about, what are the coherent practices? What are the things we are doing right now? How do we build on those? How do we, how do I support those? How do I support alignment in the system to really promote our social, emotional learning and our climate for learning, as well as that sense of connection and belongingness, right? We all want to feel like we're a part of it. So that's the first thing, right? So how do we build upon this, strengthen it, what's happening? And the two questions I ask people is, what is our intent and our impact, right? So that's a way to help the system start to think about how to improve itself. The second thing is really to, as was mentioned, start to identify and engage and really what's driving our high-quality curriculum, to your point about instruction, right? So what does, what's the high-quality curriculum? What's the use of our standards in supporting those, the curriculum? The second part of that is what does, what is the caliber, what is happening with instruction? How are people learning? How do educators have opportunities to learn about their own instruction? How do principals learn about instruction? How do we as district leadership learn about instruction? And then assessment is naturally one of the ways, right? And assessment doesn't just have to be a paper, a digital test, but assessment, what are the ways in which we're assessing our instruction and really monitoring student outcomes? And then really a big priority that the board has put before me is really to prioritize really understanding our finances and strengthening our financial profile. And so for me, that's about laying a strong foundation and understanding what those are. And part of that work is really going to have to be in terms of really auditing the system and really looking at our current, our past audits, but also future audits of what's happening in our system. So one of the works that the leadership team and I did is we really looked at, okay, so here are the priorities you've identified as you're entering the district, and then here are the priorities that you have, that the board has identified. And so is there intersect? Is there a connection across these? And we use the, you know, a Venn diagram. And I want to thank Dr. Waller and Faith Dalquus for their assistance in really helping create this visual of this. And so kind of there's some connection between them clearly. Really, I think all of them are priorities, right? And so ultimately, it's really here that the board's, our recommendation is that the board has identified these four key areas for this coming year that would be to go deeper for both implementation, but also analysis. Team, any, anything there? No? Okay. One other part of the activity we did and what you're going to see on this next, these next two slides are when we were looking through Invision 308, what we found was what we called most supportive elements strategies in Invision 308. And so when we thought about them, we created kind of like a nesting effect of like, here's the big goal, and then what are the types of supportive priorities that really lead up to this bigger goal? And so this is a draft, again, this whole thing is a draft to kind of really show our thinking as some initial processing. And so we saw that there were things that are nested within the priorities to help achieve these goals. So for example, maintain safe and nurturing learning environments, absolutely foundational to improving literacy and math. You can't create high-quality outcomes in terms of student engagement and learning if you're not having a safe and nurturing learning environment, right? So that the goal isn't just to create a nurturing and safe environment, the goal is to improve literacy and math achievement. How do we get there is by using some of these other strategies within them. And so for anybody who's in the system listening tonight, this is a reminder that every person who's got a part of this mission and the strategy is an important part to play.
Can I just say, I thank you for articulating how all of this is to help students achieve.
Yes.
And so it's all in the same.
Yes, absolutely.
I also appreciate, because we talked, to talk about this at the retreat as well, kind of the nest, you describe it as nesting, like these things that support the major priorities. And as I look through it, I can tell, which makes sense, that some of them are repeated, like the reduce, you know, there are some, you know, supportive priorities that support both, you know, improvement in literacy and math, as well as, you know, your SEL plan. And so I think that is a good strategy to hit all the priorities in Invision 308. And I'm interested as we move on to see how all those supportive priorities are developed in the processes you'll take to look at systems.
And so you see again with our district-wide plan to support behavior and social, emotional health of all students, similar structure. And then, so this is really where, I would say, this is a long-term articulation of where I would say that we are going to move towards, right? So how do we enact this, right? So this is just, not just, but this is a vision for where we would move towards over the next year and beyond, really, which is that there's a, and then I would say that, I want to start with on the right side. So this visual that you see currently is kind of a traditional approach where you have board priorities that inform district administrative goals, plans, which then inform school improvement plan, which then inform teacher teams, right? Leading to increased social, emotional health and academic achievement for all students. And we have within that our Invision 308. Now, I'm going to flip this a little bit on its head, right? And so part of our approach is that really workforce collaboration, in my theory, one of the things that the board was very interested when I joined this community was how do we do this in partnership with our unions? And how do we do this in partnership with our educators? And so there's a term, there's workforce collaboration. And so that is really engaging in a partnership with our educators to rethink this schematic. And so if you were to envision, the arrow is moving upwards, right? So our educators help inform our district leadership plans. Our school improvement plans help inform our district plans, and that will then in turn inform our board priorities. Now that is a two- to three-year plan. Where we are today is really in this term, in this schematic of where we stand today. And I'm working on establishing some partnership work so that we can bring in our educators to partner with us in this leadership work.
Can I just make a comment about this slide? I like this slide, and I'm thinking about it from a reporting standpoint. And I think when we think about the priorities in the district and if we're being successful, I think it all, you know, I feel funny sometimes, I guess it's not a hierarchy, it's just really a flow chart. But my point is, is that when we're considering the district admin plans and the board priorities, I think it's, it'll be good for us to understand from a school perspective, because the schools and the performance of the schools make up the district's goals and plans and the board's priorities. So for us to be able to see not only how well the district is doing, but how well are the schools doing individually? Because it gives us the ability to start thinking about it from an equity perspective. And it'll even drill down to the, of course, when we say culture and climate from the teachers, because if we take care of the teachers, they take care of the students. But I just think that it'll help us to have a greater understanding of how the district is doing globally if we also understand how each individual school is doing. So when the reporting comes back, we can see both.
Really, we truly are the sum of all these different parts, right? And that really makes a difference in our efforts, that everybody knows their role and their part to play. Well, that actually dovetails with the last slide, which is that, this idea that we have to measure and that which is how we can measure our progress. And so these are tools that I'm using, that we're using internally, which is when we think about accountability, who's really on, who's overall responsible, who needs to be consulted on the work, who needs to be informed in the work? And working with board members, really thinking about when we talked about spheres of influence, right? And so what's the sphere of influence of a cabinet member versus a principal versus the impact the teacher has on our system? And so these are just different tools to help us that I've identified in our work.
I love a RACI chart.
Oh, you know a RACI chart.
We've not even get me started on this.
Yeah, can we go back to that one real quick?
Yes, of course.
I really liked this because, you know, one of the things that jumps out in my mind is, you know, Dr. Kincaid, you do a great job with all of our grants and so forth, maybe not all, but a good chunk, right? Right? Yeah. And, you know, I think about like consulted, I think about spheres of influence, and I think about like the fact that the federal government is trying to cut Title I funds 80% and what that would mean to our district. And so suddenly that becomes reaching out to community members, which, you know, I've done in the last couple of weeks to make sure that they're touching base with those who are supposed to represent us on a federal level, because that would be a hit, to say the least. And granted, it's just one example, but I really like this because it really does involve all of us. I mean, you know, the great work that Dr. Kincaid does, but also the strength that we need from our community members and also what we need from our federal representatives to help us. Those are all pieces, and just, that's one example, but all pieces that are involved, I like them.
To your point, Jared, so this is in my project management world. This, we have two things that really solidify what we do, a RACI chart and a project management schedule. And those two things are very important to any project. And I should say a governance chart as well. But when we talk about clarity and we talk about focusing on goals, it's really hard if everybody attacks it together, but nobody knows what lane they belong in. And that clarity is really important. And it also makes you say, oh, wait a second, we haven't informed this person, or we haven't informed this group, or we haven't let this group know. I think as we move forward, as you're building these systems and putting in these guardrails, it is going to become very apparent where those holes are. And a lot of times, people kind of feel like accountability is a gotcha, like, oh, you're not doing it. And I always like to flip it and say, no, it's how we figure out where we need to send resources. And so I think this will be very helpful. And one of the things that I struggled with with Invision 308 is not understanding where something belonged and how we were following it. And so that is obviously just very exciting to see.
A second, what you both just said, and I just have a question about this site in particular. At the bottom, it says, "Reports on progress on these goals will be shared in October, January, March, and May." I hear that as a proposal from, you know, the superintendent to the board. My question is, and maybe this is still to be decided, but when you say goals, are we talking about the priorities? And then are also at what level can we expect reporting? Are we going to have a report on the district admin goals, the school improvement plan? You know, like that is something I'm trying to imagine to help us better think about what to expect.
So two things, I thank you for that question. And I'm going to ask Faith to speak to it in just a second to just, and I want to preface it to say that there's been a routine, right? So the strategic plan, and I mentioned kind of joining in coherence as I enter, joining in as part of the rhythm of what this district has had as practices. And so, and bringing intention and reflection about what are the intentions, what are the impact, right? So those two things. But I didn't want to immediately remove the rhythm and the pattern of the learning that the system already has. And so I'm going to ask Faith to speak a little bit to what that rhythm and pattern has been to date and how we may consult about making some of those adjustments.
So what we have been doing with Invision 308 is having a, almost a monthly report from different departments on what are those progress? And then having a beginning of the year at September of what are the intricacies we're wanting to accomplish within, for this school year? And then the mid-year progress that we've sometimes done in person, and sometimes we've given via report. And then the end-of-the-year piece as well. I think the feeling with this is going to be more around those board and common priorities and show how the supportive priorities from Invision 308 feed into that, creating measurable goals, so you can say, this is what we're going to do, you know, who is responsible, accountable, the whole RACI piece? And then looking at what are the detailed plans and being able to give quarterly or every other month, reports on how far along our journey that we said we would be, are we? There'll be alignment, as we're talking with our administrators this week, about the priorities that we have here, how they align to the school improvement plans. And our school improvement plans focus around literacy, math, behavioral and social emotional. So we'll see how that funnel, if you will, how that graphic from those other pieces fit into that. And we've still got some work to do to talk about the specifics. We wanted to make sure we're on the same place together and then build those plans. So more details coming.
As a note of encouragement, not only one board member, but I like the idea of hearing reports specifically about the priorities. We have this continuous conversation all year long about the four priorities. We should be able to name them, we should be able to name them to our community members. It's hard to name everything in strategic or in Vision 308 because there's so much. So I know that there's still more discussion to be had about how to report out, but that would be my personal encouragement.
So I have a question, is this, then, are we moving towards, let's say, we have another board meeting a week from now, adoption of these as the formal board priorities and for the. from now, uh, adoption of these as the formal board priorities then for the, for the, that may be something to consider? Is that then we move towards adoption of this as the priorities that we would focus on this year? And I think that, so I, I want to thank the board for your feedback and reflections. This was really a, a collaborative effort. Um, everybody involved, we had executive leadership teams who part, uh, members of the executive leadership team who participated in the reflection work. Uh, we have Dr. Zumke this evening, Brian Zumke, our new executive director for human resources also weighed in as we were thanking and planning for this evening's presentation. And Dr. Waller as well.
May I ask you a question before we move on? You've, I know you've only had two, um, but do you feel that what you've heard from the community in your meet and greets thus far reflect what you're seeing up here?
So, uh, for, let's say ninety percent yes. Yeah, there are some things that are still, I think, I'm curious if those are priorities that would emerge from students? Cause I haven't met with a lot of students, to be honest with you. I've met some students, so I think, but in terms of from, and, but for the majority of the priorities, absolutely. Very much reflected.
Feel free to let us know um, what those are and how we can incorporate them in the future.
Can you go back to slide two?
Yes.
So you know how you talked about nesting and that there were going to be some supportive priorities? Yes, how there were going to be some supportive priorities. And so every time I look at this, I get overwhelmed because, so is there a way to like maybe color code this slide? If, cause if we're gonna keep using it, it needs to be reflective of what you just went through, which is some of the things up there are supportive priorities and some are the priority itself. So if we color coded it, we would kind of know what was supportive and what was not. Because just looking at that, that way, that's not where, what you, what you articulated. Now, so I, there, there just, I just.
That's a really good point.
I, I agree. This is overwhelming and but it's overwhelming for us. Imagine just a regular community member checking in to figure out what we're working on. A suggestion, um, I do think there's maybe something we can do graphically to kind of look at that. But also if we think, if, if we decide and you know, look for approval, I don't know if it's a vote on board priorities based on what we heard tonight, um, maybe there's even a new graphic that emerges from that. So we know what, help, like I've said this before, help us tell the story to the community about what our priorities are. If I say we have a strategic plan, it's Envision 308 and they go here, they don't know what's happening. And so I think it's contingent upon us and the superintendent, along with you all, to help tell the story of the community of what our priorities are. And like I said, we should be able to name them, you know, math and literacy, social emotional learning, like.
An elevator speech.
Yeah, an elevator speech, correct.
I shared a um, some past strategic plans formatting, one page formatting with Dr. Calgotti that I think answers all of your questions and I know you're already working on.
Yeah, we wanted to, before we, I think it was important to hear your feedback this evening, um, before we, we, we raise something too crystallize. Um, cause sometimes when it goes too far out, then you're like, wait, where were we starting from, right? So I kind of wanted you all to see a little bit of where we felt the conversation with the board ended, which were these priorities and then move to extension and crystallizing what those, those, uh, what those workflow graphics could look like. Mary Jo, was there anything else?
No, no, I, I think everyone is pretty well articulated with what I think.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Okay, I make um, a motion to go into closed session, um, or I'm sorry, I make a motion to move to closed session following action items eight point one through eight point five.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Okay, eight point one. Action item, approval of new Oswego High School marquee. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to award the contract for the new Oswego High School marquee to Aurora Sign Company in the amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars, fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item eight point two, approval of athletic training contract. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the athletic training contract with Athletico as presented.
Second.
Because pending, just say pending attorney approval.
Sorry, before we second, pending attorney approval.
Second.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item eight point three, approval of agreement with Community Cares. Can I have a motion, please?
Uh, make a motion to approve the agreement with Community Cares as presented.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item eight point four, approval of transportation tracking technology. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the upgraded transportation technology with Synovia Solutions.
Second. And I have questions.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Mike, come on up.
Well, I, you shouldn't be surprised by this one. Um, I don't know if you'll have an answer yet, um, but it has to do with the.
ID cards?
Yeah, the RFID cards and, um, you know, yeah.
So, so after our conversation the other day, Dominic.
Would you introduce yourself, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike DiArmond, Director of Transportation with District 308.
Hello.
After seeing everybody just recently, I forgot I needed to do that. So thank you for letting me be here tonight to.
And I want to thank you, Mike, for taking attention. And before we answer this question, just to, really, this community has had a lot of concern about the transportation and as I've entered, it's a conversation you, Dr. Petzky and I have had about some of the priorities for preparing for the school year. We're excited about some of the changes. We know that we're not gonna over promise, but we are committed to ensuring that students are arriving safely. And I wanted to thank you for your leadership this last week of really preparing this. So there was a question, would you clarify the question, Dominic, just about that?
Well, um, this program, you know, after reimbursement, it's, it's negligible, the amount of money that it would cost are incremental to what we are already paying for something much, much less. Um, one of the things that I wasn't sure about was the cost of the RFID cards, which is a potential use of this, uh.
Probably be.
So that a student, all they need is an RFID card and then they're checked in on the bus and they're being able to be tracked, right? Um, there's a manual way around if that's, becomes a, a financial burden, but I just wanted to find out what that, um, what that looked like financially, um, what that card would be, um.
Yeah, yeah, so like I say, it's a proximity card. Um, I've only, only spoken to the vendor that they recommended initially, so I just got that information just today, uh, cause we, I think we spoke earlier last week, but uh, um, and I know there's other vendors out there that I, I will look at, but uh, the pricing that they gave us for the number of cards we would need would be about a dollar seventy-five per card.
Okay.
Uh, now there is also a, a printing solution that they offer that, so we can print our own cards right on the spot. Uh, and depending on how many printers you get, probably the number we would use for the number of buildings we'd have would probably be about, uh, about a thousand dollars a year per printer. So, uh, so you're looking probably another, almost eighty thousand per year, probably, something like that.
And would that be, would there be a reimbursable piece of that?
At least, yeah.
Would it be at the seventy-five percent or would this also like take the place of a student ID and therefore, you know?
Yeah, that, I'm still looking into that. I, I haven't got that far into that yet.
So even, even if it, it's still not a, it was eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars, we get reimbursed a decent amount.
Yeah.
Um, still not, to the public, this is a, a vast improvement. Um, so, uh, and again, not over promising. And the RFID cards, um, even if we were to say not use those, there is a manual solution that.
There is a manual solution.
Not, not the, not the, um, most ideal though.
Right, correct.
All right, I'm satisfied.
Thank you, Dominic.
Rollout, timeline for rollout.
I think that was.
Yeah, if, uh.
You want to jump?
Yeah, if you want to jump to, um, right there. So, uh, for tentative rollout, um, would be, we would start actually, uh, equipment installation probably right around, uh, Labor Day, right around that time. We can start the installation of equipment in all our buses. Uh, we, we plan then to start doing kind of a soft rollout on the, on the parent app, the mobile app, uh, early at the beginning of October with the intent of rolling, full, doing a full rollout, uh, mid-October to November, just in time hopefully for the cooler weather. And then, uh, then for the ridership pro, uh, process or ridership program, uh, we'd be looking at like a soft rollout in December. And then finally for the turn-by-turn solution, uh, probably a soft rollout for that by January.
So in the interim, it would just be business as usual?
Correct.
What we've done in the past.
One of the things I wanted to share, uh, the conversation that, uh, Dr. Maria and Michael, Dr. Calgotti and I had was there's two major parts to transportation. And when we look at this from a, a big picture perspective, one is the piece that we're talking about today and approving. The other is routing and we have another year with the routing that we approved last year, which is using an outside source. We still have to figure out how all this works together symbiotically and, and get better at that. And so, uh, Mr. DiArmond, he obviously has a lot on his plate right now, but I did ask for the board to see what everything looks like on like one sheet of paper and what all the costs are involved. So, um, this is definitely a step in the right direction, but we still have to solve for the fact that we're going to continue to have routing issues until we make some sort of investment in, um, routing software ourselves. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. I know it's something that Mrs. Simelton and I have been trying to, um, uh, really nail down over the last couple of years and it's still something that remains, you know, we have a year to go on this contract for this school year, but something we're gonna have to start talking about, um, again.
Yeah, so just, just so we're maybe, um.
Yes.
Trying to help everybody understand. So the contract that we, we signed with First Planning Solutions was not for routing software, it was for actual.
A router.
Personnel.
Correct.
Right, right. So, so the solution to that, uh, to resolve that with, is to, um, solidify my staff and get my staff in a position where they can do the routing themselves, the new employees that I've hired, so, and to get a, and to hire a, a sped coordinator that does our sped routing, so, or special services routing. So, so that's, it's not necessarily a, a software issue as much as it is a personnel issue.
No, I know, but that's what I'm, that's, I guess what I'm trying to get down to boil it down is there's all these parts and we, we keep, we continue to see them individually instead of the whole picture of what it takes to run the trans, what are the resources that it takes to run the transportation department? And so I think for the benefit of the new board members, for the benefit of where, um, Mrs. Simelton and I worked with you during negotiations and talking about all the things that you need, um, we need to see that in a more holistic presentation versus like the one-off asks. And that's what we talked about the other day in our meeting, so I wanted to share it with my colleagues.
I, I appreciate that, um, and that is definitely a commitment of ours. And I know that I'll invite, um, for our request that, um, Mike and John be prepared to share in September, um, an update of how transportation is launched for the school year. I think it'll be important for us to be prepared to reflect on what are the procedures that we put in place, what's the communication that was enacted and what is the workflow and the budget of what's happening as we launch that. So I know that it'll be, it'll be timely because we will be right into the school year. And I, in, for those watching, in the rest of the presentation, you will see in there, um, both the challenges that we observed during the spring, um, and the solutions. And, um, uh, do you want to, as we come to, I don't know if there are many more questions, but I did want to leave, give Mr. Mike, uh, opportunity to say anymore, you'd like to say about anything that you noticed with your presentation tonight?
Um, I, I guess first off, I want to say that, you know, I hope you guys understand how bested I actually am in this, in this process because not only am I Director of Transportation, but I'm also the parent of four SD 308 students, so, and who ride the bus. So, so it is in my best interest, uh, because I have a boss at home who wants our kids to get to school on time in a safe manner. Uh, so it, it's, it is in our best interest, my best interest, both personally and professionally to succeed in here. So, um, you know, as, as Dr. Calgotti and I were talking and we, we getting to know each other a little bit and, but it came down, you know, it came very clear that we needed to take a deeper dive, a, a, a more, more deep look into, um, the concerns of the community and to also, um, better understand those root causes of what, what, what the issues are, you know? Sometimes it's easy to, to hear the, you know, the noise, but to actually understand what, what, what is underneath that's really causing the problem. So, so, um, I don't know if you, you want me to go through the whole presentation?
I think just this particular slide would be important to share as we think about the year to come. I think this would be the most important slide.
So yeah, so looking at, you know, these are some of the issues that we, we identified. So staffing shortage, um, you know, that was, you know, people were tired of hearing us say that. I get, I get several emails or phone calls, I got several emails, phone calls last year saying, there's no such thing as staffing shortage anymore. There's plenty of drivers. Well, just, uh, just as I was fiddling through my, uh, my news reel here, before I came up here, I actually came across one that says, eight thousand Chicago public school students won't have bus service on the first day of school due to being short of one thousand three hundred drivers.
Can I, can I add onto that real quick? I don't mean to interrupt you, but you know, as, as a son of a truck driver, right? Who, uh, one of the things that I've heard plenty of times, right? And, and, um, you know, brag a little bit, there's, sometimes you might see a truck with my last name on it, right? That was my father's company, right? And you know, you can make good money as a truck driver. And one of the things that I've heard in the community is, well, just tell the truck drivers to come and part-time and help. I, you know, my dad would love to have made what, what some, some, not saying all, but what some truck drivers make. And, and to think that they're gonna come off these routes that they have, I mean, my dad did long hauls, it's just not, I don't know how to explain this, that the way the market is set up for the, you know, the labor market, that's not going to be a feasible solution.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be diplomatic, but I wanted to add on to that.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And as somebody who's been in the transportation, both trucking industry and busing, um, you know, there, it's a different, different ballgame. I mean, it's, I mean, hauling forty, you know, eighty thousand pounds of freight that doesn't talk back to you, that doesn't give you any kind of grief.
Yeah.
It's a very different game than, than, than driving a bus with, with, you know, trying to drive sixty kids that are loud, noisy and screaming in your ear. So, but, but thank you for your point there. Uh, so getting back on point here, uh, so our response was that, to that, the staffing shortage, um, we really worked hard last year for the, the contract negotiations and getting the new CBA with increased wages and, and a very healthy, what I consider a very healthy, uh, attendance bonus. So that was a, a good success there. Uh, professional services, services shortage. So I don't know if for those that weren't aware, the, uh, pre-COVID, uh, first student and Septran are providers and with the professional services were, between the two were somewhere around probably sixty to seventy buses that they were providing a year. Uh, last year they provided, uh, between the two of them, we had less than thirty routes that they covered for us. So, uh, we were able to, uh, get new contracts with new providers, or one new provider, Durham School Service and then Septran. and then Septran, but this time we implemented route minimums in our contracts with them. So there, they have to provide us 25 routes each at a minimum, and that's in contract or there will be penalties. The other issue that we really struggled with, especially early on, was, you know, getting our bus notification, getting late bus notifications out to families in a timely manner. We did work really hard with Teresa and her team in communications to try to become more efficient and try to use the, the platform that we had to the best of its ability. And I, I did, we did see improvement, but there was still room that we could improve there. One of the other things I kept hearing from parents, especially parents of junior high and high school parents, was that their students aren't receiving the notifications of the buses being late. The platform that we're on, or the platform that we were on, Blackboard, was only sending, for the most part, messages to parents. And so if the parents weren't home, then they had to reach out to their students and, and vice versa. And if the student was home and the bus hadn't shown up, well, the student then was reaching out to the parent, trying to find, hey, did you get a bus message or not? So what we did then is we wanted to look into an application, a mobile app, that will go beyond the parents, that will can include the students if the students have mobile devices. One of the things, challenges we also felt like we were, have experienced, especially when you're short staff, is, you know, supporting your drivers, the drivers that are working hard, working more hours than they're used to working, more hours than they want to work a lot of times, and then keeping them safe while they're out there working those hours and working hard. So one of the things we believe would be a great addition to supporting them and, and making a tough job a little less tough, is a turn-by-turn navigation system that would be supported by the GPS platform also. And then the last piece that we want to do, be as fiscally responsible and try to, as best as we can, to optimize our loads in our buses. We don't want, we don't want a bus with only, only half-full, and we don't want a bus with 20 kids more than its capacity. We want, we want to be in that sweet spot, so, which is, you know, comfort, safety, and then using our equipment to the best of its ability for what it's made for, so. So those things that we looked at, you know, looking at those criteria, we were looking for a bus tracking or ETA bus app for parents and students with the ability to integrate multiple GPS providers. I say that because our contractors are on a different GPS platform than what we are. So we wanted to be able to integrate their GPS systems into ours for that, so that everybody can be seen. We also wanted to have that ability to, in addition to our mass communication platform that the district has, we wanted to be able to additionally send out, push notifications out to the app. If there's buses running late, or we can send individual messages per bus out. Then that student ridership piece to maximize that load, that load optimization, the turn-by-turn, and then also a time and attendance piece that most of those systems that we looked at have. So that would give us an opportunity to centralize that on, into that platform, and we'd be able to remove the time and attendance that we currently use. And then the project implementation timeline was another key piece. So, so that was a key piece, so.
So this evening, the recommendation towards the board?
Yeah, so the recommendation is that we would go with Senovia Solutions, and there, here comes the bus parent app. We currently have, Senovia is our provider. So we would actually, just, it would be kind of an equipment refresh. It would, like I said, integrates the parent, the contractor's GPS, it gives us the student ridership, the turn-by-turn, the time and attendance. They, we actually have contracts with them for our current services. As I said, they would actually, we would give us credit for our contracts, and we would start fresh with a new contract. And then the implementation is going to be, you know, long-term, you know, 10 to 12 weeks.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right.
We already made the motion.
Yeah, we already made the motion. Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Venmuth?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item eight point five, approval of resolution providing the issue of general obligation refunding school bonds. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $7 million general obligation refunding school bonds of the school district for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchasers thereof, and authorizing the execution of certain escrow agreements in connection therewith as presented.
Second, I have a question.
Yeah.
Have, have any assumptions changed?
Dr. Petzky, do you want to introduce our guest?
Let me introduce Bob, is our PMA consultant, and Bob Lewis will, he's been working very hard on putting together the bond sale force, so let him answer where we were and where we are.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, pardon me, thank you for having me here tonight. So the month of July, you know, the economic news was favorable, mostly for the bond market, CPI, PCE, deflator, both coming in at or below expectations. Those are two different inflation reports, which has been the big driver of market conditions the last 18 months. So interest rates are roughly where they were at the last time you saw this presentation. We were on the more conservative side estimating savings last time, so our estimate as of today, refreshing the rates, is probably about $80,000 higher on a present value basis, so our current estimate's right around $465,000. I think the memo had $386,000, so.
Just from a pure dollar instead of a present value?
Right.
What is, what are those numbers now? And in the past?
Yeah, $580,000 over the life of the bond.
Versus 500?
Previously, it was 437.
Okay. And is this getting executed tomorrow?
It can be executed as early as tomorrow, subject to board approval.
Okay. That's, that's, oh, I'm, I'm sorry if I wasn't talking to Mike. That's all I have.
I have a question. So what interest rate are we looking at now as opposed to what we were looking at the last time these were issued?
Yeah, the estimated interest rate is 3.44. It's a true interest cost, it's a composite rate. I think though, when I emailed you last time, it was 3.7 something.
Okay, I know.
And that was just market?
It was market, but, you know, is, there's about seven basis points that was market change in your favor, and the other portion was just a little bit of conservative estimate.
Okay, okay. I appreciate you baking that in, the conservative, yeah. So that's all I had.
Yeah, I'm good. Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Venmuth?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item eight point six, approval of district administrator contract.
Nope, nope.
I think we're, yeah.
Close session.
Eight point one going into closed.
We have to do that. Talking closed.
Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to enter closed session under statutes 5ILCS 120 slash T2C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of certain employees and individuals. 5ILCS 120 slash 2C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.